We're live on YouTube and get to start.
Good evening. Welcome to the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education Open Agenda Meeting, April 22nd, 2021. Mrs. Sarah Jackey, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bauer?
Here.
Mrs. Boroff?
Here.
Mrs. Brody?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Sariani?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Winkler?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Dr. Kulakowski?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarah Jackey. Please join me in the salute to the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The executive session report. We discussed personnel and the legal status report. We had some additions to the agenda. This was modified after Friday, April 16th. 16 B U S E I Associates Proposal. 17 B U S, the E E F Grant Awards. 18 B U S Theater Vendors. 19 B U S Wireless Upgrades. 20 Runner Rooftop Units. 21 B U S Park Rooftop Unit. 22 B U S Environmental Safety Management Corporation. 23 B U S Acceptance of Gov Deals Funds. And 24 B U S Computer Public Sale Bit. Now, at this time, Dr. Mast would like to say a few words. Dr. Mast?
Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. First, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy Earth Day. We have some projects in our schools and some extracurricular activities that certainly reflect reflected our students' concern for the earth. So today has been a special day. I also want our community to know that I have been working with my team tirelessly to move towards opening five full days. As you know, we are currently open five days from pre-K through grade 12 for in-person learning for families who have made that choice. This includes a break where students return home for lunch and then a learning session for students with the teachers in the afternoon. When we made the decision to open for the five days, the COVID activity was trending from a high activity level to a moderate activity level. I was hopeful that that trend would continue. We all know that the activity level has taken a turn in the wrong direction. The last two weeks has been the highest on record for positive COVID cases since the pandemic first hit town. A federal report recently listed 21 New Jersey counties in the red zone, including Union County. Based on this data, we are not able to consider opening further at this time. We will continue to monitor the conditions and the data trends. I do want to thank everyone for their patience and support as we focus on a successful end to this 2021 school year and continue to plan for a successful 2122 school year. At this time, I would like Mrs. Rabimbas just to give a brief update on what she has been doing in her important planning work. Mrs. Rabimbas?
Thank you, Dr. Mast. So the Department of Special Services is excited and preparing its annual extended school year program for our students who are eligible in their I E P to receive the E S Y program. We are currently planning to hold the program at School One and Park as we usually do and also have a virtual option for our families that choose that. We will continue to implement the remediations that have been put in place during the school year, and we will continue to plan for an academic program for our students.
Thank you. And Dr. McGary has been busy working with his team as well. Dr. McGary, can you please give a brief update?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Mast. In addition to health and safety, learning acceleration continues to be a priority for our school district. And in many ways, these are really inextricably linked. Since our abrupt close last March, each forward-moving pivot has afforded new opportunities for us to accelerate learning as we get closer to doing school in ways that more closely resemble pre-pandemic times. As we prepare to come out of the pandemic, we know that we will continue to see a great deal of variation in student growth. Our next challenge will be to accurately and objectively measure where all students are at the end of this school year so that we can clearly identify and then analyze where we leave off with our students prior to summer so that when we begin the new school year, we do so in such a way that we're able to meet students where they are and propel them forward in intentionally individualized way. By reviewing pacing, as we have been all year long, and adjusting assessment practices, we've been paying close attention to student learning progress and developing new strategies and adapting old ones along the way. As we do, there have been and continue to be several critical questions we have and continue to pose. These include questions such as, how do we use the face-to-face time we have with students to accelerate their learning? It was with intention that we crafted the schedules that we're currently utilizing that allow for this to happen at all levels. Some parents might have learned a new term, as some of our teachers have used this term to describe our afternoon sessions in particular, and particularly at the elementary schools. That term is WIN time. WIN is an acronym for What I Need, and it embodies the purpose of much of our afternoon remote sessions. We've also answered this question by focusing on what the New Jersey Department of Education has identified as priority standards for each grade level in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. Another question we've been tasked with looking at is, how can we extend learning beyond brick and mortar? Meaning outside of the school year and outside of the school day and actually outside of the school itself. Are there students who could benefit from intentional connection with educators over the summer? Or would an early back-to-school opportunity or even year-long supplemental programs throughout the new school year make a better plan for supporting student acceleration? Determining the measures we are given, the uniqueness of this year is something in which we are engaged while we also are pondering whether this summer is really the best time to engage our students in this way, or do they simply need a break from all that this year has led them to endure? And as well as our educators, who have endured a lot too. That said, we have several programs that we're currently considering as we learn more about where our students will end up at the end of the year. That includes the reinstatement of two transitional programs that have been utilized in the district in the past, including a stepping stones program for students who are transitioning from fourth grade to fifth grade, a freshman academy at the high school for incoming ninth graders, and the addition of stepping stone opportunities for students who have not stepped back into school since March, a really important thing for us to be thinking about. We're also looking at a middle school summer program that focuses on priority standards in math and E L A, as well as grade-level curriculum in social studies and science, and a credit recovery program for specific courses such as Algebra I at the high school. And then the final question we continue to ask is, how do we use what we have learned since last March to continue to enhance learning? Related to this is, how do we use our newfound one-to-one infrastructure to allow students to practice skills they're ready to acquire or ready to strengthen? One of the things... Sorry. Clearly, the one-to-one infrastructure lends itself to being able to do more around differentiation with really objective data. So for these reasons and others, assessment will play a more important role than ever in making sure students receive the right instruction at the right time. As most families are aware and most educators are aware, the state is not going to be administering standardized testing this spring. And so with the absence of that test data for the second year in a row, we're working on a realistic district-wide plan for continuing to assess student learning progress as we come out of the pandemic. We intend to take a substantial snapshot prior to the end of the year so that we can plan for continued acceleration and resource our teachers at the start of the year for important information about students so that from the first day of school in September, they can more quickly facilitate an individualized approach to learning acceleration. The snapshot will give us insights into where students are academically, where learning gaps exist, and what students and teachers need to reach or exceed grade level and succeed with standards-based learning targets. Assessing students with a standards-based growth measurement tool prior to the end of the year will allow us to efficiently diagnose students' learning needs, target instruction accordingly, and monitor progress all year long next year. And so those are some of what we're working on between now and the end of our school year and look forward to really knowing where we end up so that the beginning of next year is a different beginning than it would be in a traditional year.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. And thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. We will be following up this information with reports to the parents so they can also read it and see what's forthcoming.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Thank you, Mrs. Rabimbas. Thank you, Dr. McGary. So the board's president announcement is that the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education has cause notice of these meetings to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 512 Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. And it's also notice provided in written form to the Times, the Star-Ledger, the Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, and the Borough Clerk of Fanwood in the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings as adopted March 26, 2020. Next, we'll move on to the instructional updates, and Dr. Mast will introduce our guest speakers. Dr. Mast?
Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. I am going to introduce Jen Appleby, who will then introduce her team. But first, tonight's an exciting night where the E E F is coming forward to share the important work that they do. What we enthusiastically embrace is they continue to support innovation among our teachers and our educators in the district where they really challenge us to think out of the box in the grants that we're going to learn about tonight. Jen?
Thank you, Dr. Mast, and thank you to the board for giving us some time to talk about the grants. So my name's Jen Appleby, and I'm the president of the Educational Enrichment Foundation of Scotch Plains Fanwood, and I'm here with Mike Noriega, who is our secretary, and Tiffany Gallagher, who's one of our trustees. So again, thank you for letting us present, and thank you to the teachers who came out tonight to join us as well. So we're going to be a little optimistic and hope that when we get to the teachers, if they use the hand raise feature, that maybe that'll bring them to the front of the screen to be recognized, but we'll see how it works. So for those who are not familiar with the E E F, we are a philanthropic organization that we hold fundraisers that many of you have attended, and we do that so we can support different initiatives in the district. So in the fall and in the summer, we supported some of the professional development that the teachers did and also presented, and we were happy to do that. We've done in the past a leadership training conference for middle schoolers, and the high schoolers are the leaders in that hackathon. We may be having a moot court opportunity coming up. So we like to do activities with the students, but also tonight, I think, is our most exciting endeavor, which is our educator grants. So every year, we invite teachers, administrators, and staff to apply for grants if they believe they have an innovative idea that they want to try that's outside of the normal budget or outside of the normal activity in the district. And some of these are one-off activities that will happen once, and then we'll see what we learn from it and go from there. And some of them are things that ultimately get rolled into the everyday operations in the district. So last year, we were able to celebrate our recipients on March 5th, which was dangerously close to being not a happy celebration, but we were able to squeeze it in. And a lot of those grants were included tactile, touching, and one of them includes livestock. So as you can imagine, we haven't been able, the teachers haven't been able to implement those this year. So in addition to the 11 grants we'll be talking about tonight, that'll be implemented this spring and in the next school year that you'll be seeing grants in some of your children's classrooms that are from, that were meant to be done this year, but you know, you can't have baby chicks in a classroom during a pandemic. And there were also robots and sensory pathways and things that the children had to touch. So those teachers have, as they always do, adjusted and made plans for moving these things to the future. But we are going to focus now on the current group of grant recipients. So we had many excellent applications, and it's always a great night. There's always a lot of energy when we look at the, review the grants and discuss the grants, and this year was no different. And so we have 11 grants that we funded for a total of almost $13,000. So Tiffany and Mike are going to help me recognize the teachers and talk about the great things that they will be doing this spring and in the next year. And so we're going to start with the elementary schools, and then we'll go in alphabetical order from there through the schools. And then, so like I said, so if you're here and you were awarded a grant, we'll try the raise hand feature and see if that brings you to the front of the screen so the world can see you. I might be being overly optimistic that that is going to happen. So we'll be starting with, so Tiffany is going to start with the grant for, so if these teachers are here, then we'll try the hand raise. So Heather Tarantino, Jessica Brzezinski, and Kristin Lapari. And I'm going to turn it over to Tiff.
Awesome. Thanks, Jen, and thank you to the Brunner educators, Heather, Jessica, and Kristin, for your awesome idea to support our first graders. So this team of educators will be provided a $1,000 grant, and it's really focused on two important topics: reading and diversity and inclusion. This grant's going to provide books to the first-grade classroom libraries as well as for the guided reading lessons. But the most important part about this is that the books are going to include culturally diverse texts. So the goal is to provide every student in the classroom books to read that have characters that they can relate to. So we all thought this was an excellent idea. Thank you very much for your commitment to creating lifelong readers, and thank you for really driving for an environment of inclusion. Next up, oh yeah, clap. Next up, we're going to go to our Kohl's teachers. So if our Kohl's teachers can try the hand-raised trick that Jen talked about, but this is the first year Kohl's will be receiving a grant from the E E F. And this year, we're really excited to be awarding two Kohl's Grants totaling $3,100. So I'm going to start off with thanking Dr. Weatherall for her grant, which will help to incorporate coding into the Kohl's curriculum. So as part of this grant, the first through fourth grade Kohl's students will be provided grade-level appropriate bots, so it's going to give them some real hands-on experience with coding, but also give them the excitement of working with a real robot. So we all thought the kids would love this, love this idea. And then, given that programming is pretty much as important as any language these days, we thought this was a great request, and we were happy to support. So thank you, Dr. Weatherall. We'll do a little clap. The next grant is being awarded to Mrs. Genacio, our Kohl's librarian, and I love this one. This will be a $1,000 grant that Mrs. Genacio will use to hold a school-wide reading event, and it will incorporate not just the students, but the faculty and even their families. So what will happen is everyone's going to simultaneously read a book that's going to be provided. It's called "The Wild Robot," and it's going to allow the students and those other folks that I mentioned the opportunity to really discuss the key themes that are in the book. And the book includes a lot of great themes, including kindness and inclusion, adapting and accepting change, and also some themes about technology, given that it's about a robot. And as a Kohl's parent myself, I know I'm excited to read the book with the little one. So thank you, Mrs. Genacio, for your grant. And then finally, I will invite April Chesting, Jordan Gribbin, and Terry Keller, all from Evergreen, to try to raise their virtual hands if that is working. So this is another great grant, and it's also focused a bit on diversity and inclusion. So I really love it. These educators will receive $1,500 to provide the first through fourth graders with a wide range of literature to foster discussions about social justice and equity. The students will read a variety of books, and then the educators are really going to use that reading to springboard some discussions in the classrooms focused on supporting inclusivity, understanding of difference, and acceptance. So the E E F agreed that this experience that the students will get through these discussions will really prepare them to better tackle real-world problems and help them consider multiple perspectives, really value diversity, and promote a cultural of understanding. So thank you, April, Jordan, and Terry for this great idea, and congratulations on your grant. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike to finish out our elementary school grants.
Thank you so much, Tiffany, and thank you so much, the board, for having me here tonight as well as for the E E F. Just a quick, we're so thankful for all that you've done this year. We know how complicated this has been, and you don't understand how excited it made us to receive the grant requests and to be able to go through those and know that you are still really putting in all of your effort for our kids in the community and still thinking about their best interest and the best way to educate them. So we were so excited to sit down and pour through these grants to figure out how to make the best of all of this madness that we're going through. So continuing first on the theme of engaging students in reading of a variety of texts, our first School One grant. And just if anybody is here from School One, raise your hand, say hello to everyone so that they can see you. Our first School One grant is for $1,050 for bringing life back to guided reading. Congratulations to first-grade teachers Marina Behren, Caitlin Disney, and Meredith Sakheim. This project is going to increase the opportunities for students to read books of high interest during their guided reading time with texts that represent a variety of cultures and viewpoints while also providing an appropriate range of reading levels. Participating students are going to expand their worldview and experience a mirror into their own lives and windows into the experiences of others. The books will be used throughout the school year and hopefully for many years to come. So thank you so much, and congratulations. The next School One grant, we had a big School One year. We were very excited about that. The next School One grant was for $650 for debunking gender stereotypes through fiber arts, sewing in the elementary art room. Ms. Cavalieri, we loved this one. This is so exciting. We were so excited to have this idea. And congratulations to Jessica Cavalieri. Several of our trustees have students who sew or trustees who sew themselves, so they were very excited to bring sewing into the fourth-grade classroom, the art classroom. This project will give students access to creation through sewing, which is a medium that is unfamiliar and not readily available to many students. The use of sewing machines will spark new interest in students and take traditional hand-sewing one step further. This hands-on tactile experience promotes design and problem-solving skills in new ways for students and will expose opportunity for creativity for all students. Thank you so much for the very creative idea. We were extremely excited to support it, and we hope it's a successful program. Congratulations. And last but not least, congratulations to Ellen Young and Caroline Smith for their grant for the fourth-grade virtual field trip to the Liberty Science Center. The grant was initially proposed as an activity for this year's School One fourth graders. Now, what happened at the meeting is that this sparked such interest that we decided as a board that we would actually provide a grant for the entire district across the board, for the entire fourth grade, for them to have a field trip to the Liberty Science Center in the spring of 2021. This is going to bring science and innovation into the classroom and give fourth-grade students an interactive experience with science concepts as well as a sense of normalcy and excitement during this time that we're dealing with, and hopefully a nice end to their fourth grade class. So as, thank you for the spark of innovation on your part to give us the idea, and hopefully the entire fourth grade can enjoy this field trip as well. So thank you so much. We're now going to move to the grants for the upper grades, and I'll turn it over to Jen. And if you're here from Terrell Middle School, please raise your hand so you can be recognized. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Mike, and Tiff. And congratulations to all the elementary school grant recipients. We're really excited by all of the projects. And so now we are going to move to the middle school and the high school. So right now, I want to recognize Courtney Kelleher, Joy Monaco, Lauren Maines, Jessica Rivas, Ingrid Winters, Erin Farrell, and Rashida Adams for their grant for bridging the gap for exceptional learners and hybrid learning using Kami. One of our trustees is a middle school math teacher in a different district, and she was very enthusiastic about Kami and happy to, and was like, we have to fund this. This is great. My students, she, my students use it and really get a lot out of it. So we're hoping that the Terrell students also enjoy it. So Kami will be used to provide special education students with visual models, text annotation, speech-to-text, and text-to-speech accommodations in the classroom, whether they're remote or whether they're onsite, and it can bridge the gap, providing all learners, especially those with exceptionalities, access to the supports that they need. So congratulations, and thank you for bringing this technology to the district. And so now we will move on to the high school, and I know I've seen some of the high school teachers here, so if they want to raise their hands, I know those of us on the panel could see the hand raising going. I'm not sure that it's working on the livestream, so I apologize to the livestream viewers.
If you have them say their name, they'll come to the front.
So, well, we can give the high school, if the high school teachers who are here want to unmute and say their names, then you can come to the front and be YouTube famous. Oh, we're good? Okay. So in the past few years, the high school grants have been very hands-on. I mentioned livestock. That was a high school project. There were also fish in the high school. There was for this year, neuroscience robots, which obviously is also hands-on. So this year, the highest, as did all of the teachers around the district, the high school teachers pivoted to things that work in this world that we're living in right now with the hybrid learning and students not always being able to interact with the materials. So the focus was, as you've heard in some of the lower grades, the focus was really on reading, particularly of culturally relevant texts. And we had a grant for ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade, which was very exciting. So we're going to start in ninth grade with a grant for creating a culture of reading with Project Lit. So congratulations to Christina Held and Jesse Johnson, both of whom are here. Project Lit is a grassroots network of student-led book groups that aims to get young people excited about reading by highlighting diverse, high-interest, culturally relevant books. And their project will encourage a culture of reading in the academic ninth-grade English classes by providing access to such textbooks. And students will have a choice in what to read, and they will be given time to read them. So students will choose from a selection of specially curated titles, and then they will work with a partner in a small group, having discussions with the teacher, without the teacher, discussing core concepts, cultural norms in the novels as compared to their own, and the stylistic choices made by the author. And their exploration of the text will culminate with a completion of a final project. And we were excited about the idea of a final project, sort of wrapping it all up at the end. So congratulations, and thank you. And then a similar grant in 10th grade is for the 10th grade accelerated English students. Patisha Patel has a grant for linking communities, the student-led inquiry mindset approach. And the primary objective of this project is to incorporate a wide range of diverse American literature titles into sophomore English classes. Students will develop inquiry research on important topics that relate to race, culture, and identity, which are all important matters that influence the community. And students will engage in goal-oriented tasks throughout the year, culminating with a student-led conference in the fourth marking period. So again, a nice culminating project at the end of the reading. So congratulations. And then our final high school grant was for a grant for the 11th grade English students, which was LGBTQ plus visibility and empowerment through book clubs, which is awarded to Kanika Chopra and Randolph Kettner. So congratulations. And their project will incorporate new book club titles into the 11th grade English classes as a means of fostering inclusivity and giving students the chance to engage in critical dialogue about identity and forces that influence identity. An inclusive curriculum supports students' ability to empathize, connect, and collaborate with a diverse group of peers, skills that are of increasing importance in our multicultural global society. And the powerful stories afforded by these texts, coupled with their discussions, will equip students with tools and the space to examine authentic social-political issues that affect identity. So a nice theme across all of the high school English classes. So again, I'd like to offer congratulations to all of our grant recipients, and thank you for taking the time to put in, so put in your application. They're always well-written, well-researched, often with the literature supporting the grant cited. So we appreciate you putting the, taking the time to put together such great applications. And we also, you'll be hearing from us because we like to hear some follow-up once the grants are underway. So we are looking forward to hearing more about the projects. And we also want to plug that if you have a good experience with all of this, encourage your colleagues to apply next year, or you can apply again. There's no limit to the number of grants that you can be awarded. So with that, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed and the community for your time this evening, and let's take one more final round of applause for all of the grant recipients. Thank you for bringing these innovative ideas to our district.
Thank you for doing the introductions, Jen. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tiffany, and thank you, Dr. Mast, for bringing the E E F to the And thank you, Dr. Mast, for bringing the EF to the instructional update this evening. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the instructional update? Amy Boroff?
I just wanted to thank, well, first of all, it was, I really appreciate, I love, you know, hearing about the grants that the EF gives out and all the talent and the amazing creative ideas that our staff comes up with. And so I really want to thank the EF for their support of these amazing programs and for these, like, these are just such great innovative ideas that are so important and critical. So thank you to the teachers who brought them to the table and I do look forward to hearing the update on them.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Anyone else? I just was so impressed with all the variety of different people and the projects that the grants were awarded this evening. And I hope a listing of that will be posted on our website so everybody can appreciate the the variety of grants that our students will be able to take part in.
I'll put a link to our website that has the listing of last year's grants and this year's grants will be added and then I'll make, I'll share that, share that list with the board so that, or with the school board so they can decide if there's an appropriate place on the website for it.
Thank you. That would be wonderful. Appreciate it. Any other comments for the instructional update presenters? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much for taking the time to be part of the Board of Education meeting this evening. Congratulations to all the recipients and it's wonderful news for our students. Thank you. You're welcome to continue on for the board meeting or you may skedaddle as we've got some business to take care of. Okay, thank you for introducing them, Dr. Mast. On the 29th, we will have another instructional update. PTA recognition of the Reflections winners as well as the public hearing on the 2021-2022 school budget. So that brings us to the first public comment portion. So if you want to make a public comment, please go to the spfk12.org website for Zoom login information. In accordance with the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools Bylaw 0164 and 165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments. There'll be a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing the superintendent items, business functions, and other board business matters will be heard first. And if time remains, speakers may address other matters. So if you would like to make a public comment, please go to the spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. When it's your turn, please unmute and then state your full name and the town in which you reside. Please note, board members cannot respond regarding concerns of individual students or staff members. Such matters should be addressed with the superintendent's office. So Ms. Broadbent, I ask you if there's anybody lined up, ready to make a public comment?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski. Our first caller is Eric Felon.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Felon. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Eric Felon, Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions here. First one revolves around busing for the upcoming year and whatnot. So over the past year, our town received a huge influx of new families, children into the community. It also imposes a huge impact on our town resources, causing a lot of street traffic for our parents. They're dropping off kids at the school as well as a huge danger to kids walking and biking to school. I feel that now is the time that we need to abolish the ridiculous busing requirements that are in motion and allow students the opportunity to bus to school. The system, the busing system that has been in play since, I don't know how long, it's been since it is, was a fraction of what it is now with all the traffic. And we live in a modern world now, both parents of a family may work. And, you know, in a current situation, it could be a challenge to many, especially during the winter months, requiring a 10-year-old to bike two miles through the elements and busy roads. There's not a lot of sidewalks in the, in the town where, where we live. So, so that's the first question I have is giving more opportunity to busing and the traffic is so dangerous. I'm afraid to have my kids ride their bike to school. There's not enough crossing guards that, to cover all the areas where they would be crossing the streets. My, my next question would be in regards to the real, full reopening of schools and vaccinations. I wanted to know if, have any of the students in the schools that we send out the reports, have they been verified to have contacted COVID while in school classes as opposed to not in the school session with the numbers? And if so, are there metrics to support that any of the, the COVID cases are spreading through the schools? And have the teachers that are now eligible for vaccination, have they been willing to go out and get vaccinated? Is there any reluctance there? And will there be any requirements for going forward for teachers to get vaccinated in order to restore full ability and potential of our school, our students to return to full school? So that's pretty much it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Felon.
Dr. Kulikowski, I'd like to just briefly respond to some of Mr. Felon's topics.
Oh, for all means, go right ahead, Dr. Mast.
Thank you. So first, regarding busing, you know, our current busing policy does, does follow the, the state regulation. And we are currently under a, a study of our transportation. So, you know, thank you for raising that question. At this point, we still, for, for the most part, follow the, the state regulations. Two, regarding the, the contact tracing in the schools, you know, the daily letters that go out identify individuals in the school, whether it be staff or students who are COVID positive. And then what the district does is quarantine people who have been within six feet of that individual. We, we do not have any evidence that it's being transmitted in the school, but we certainly have evidence that COVID is in the community, given the number of, of cases that, that we report each week. And regarding vaccination, I think I'm going to ask Doug to respond to that. Certainly, I have not detected any reluctance. In fact, I've, I've observed teachers being very anxious and staff members being very willing for the vaccine.
Sure. Dr. Kulikowski, Dr. Mast, thank you. Yeah, the, the school board at this time doesn't have any legal authority to mandate staff or students to be vaccinated for COVID-19 in order to either work in the schools or attend the schools. Nor do we have any authority to mandate reporting regarding vaccination rates. So, you know, we certainly encourage people to let us know, especially staff, to let us know if and when they're vaccinated because it certainly helps with a number of things in terms of staffing. But we don't currently have any legal authority to mandate those things, you know. The vaccination requirements you get from your schools for the kids, you know, the annual flu shots, the MMR vaccines, all those things, that, those mandates all come from the state, including mandates that we enforce those requirements. We, the state has yet to pass any kind of requirements about COVID-19 vaccinations. It's possible those mandates will be in place before September as the eligibility has since opened up recently to everyone over 16. The vaccine is more available now than it was when it first rolled out. But again, absent some kind of action from the state of New Jersey, you know, the Scotch Plains Board can't issue those types of vaccine mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Dr. Mast, for those follow-ups. Ms. Broadbent, do we have another speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Amy Rice. Hi, Amy. Please unmute yourself.
Amy, when you unmute yourself, please state your full name and the town in which you reside.
Amy Reese Fanwood.
Thank you for correcting that. Appreciate it.
That's okay. Um, so, school ends in June. I would like to know when we are opening for a full day. So in my, in my
Sorry, I was just going to say that my usual, I don't always do the spiel every meeting, but Ms. Reese, since you only have the three minutes, if that's your only question, that's perfectly fine. But if you have any other questions, you know, please ask them and then the board will respond.
That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Reese. In my opening statement, I did talk about the fact that we're in a place where we are open for the five days. It's, it's a, it's a good place as we, we look in, you know, to, to the openings in Union County in our region. The, when, when we made that move, the trend was moving from, from a high level of COVID activity to a lower level of activity, but it has since taken a U-turn. So we continue to monitor that data. At, at this point, you know, we're, we're really in a holding pattern of our, our opening. It could be that we won't be opening further, but if there is an opportunity, we certainly are going to try.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. And thank you for your comments, Mrs. Reese.
Dr. Kulikowski, yeah, our next caller is Ross LeBrun.
Thank you. Ms. LeBrun, when you unmute yourself, please state your full name and the town in which you reside.
My name is Ross LeBrun, Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
So first, I want to publicly commend Dr. Mast's work in getting schools open to the extent that it can be done safely. It's no small task. I'm glad to hear Dr. McGary talk about standards and assessment. In that vein, I'm asking the Curriculum Committee to look into the grading practices of the district. We go from elementary school being closely connected to standards in terms of grading to a willy-nilly assigning of points per assignment. This problem, and it is a problem, exists across the academic program. Just one example, in the eighth grade math expo third marking cycle at Terrell, one assignment is worth 100 points, which is 47.4% of the grade. One is worth 30 points, 14.2% of the grade, and one is worth 25 points, 11.8%. While there are 14 other grades worth four points each. So there's three assignments that are worth a total of 73% of the entire grade, while there are 14 assignments worth 26%. That 100 pointer is worth 47% of the entire marking cycle. It is the one grade to rule them all. No matter what the others are worth, in this case, 52.6% of the overall, that one assignment is going to largely control the overall grade in any direction. It could be good and it could be bad. All those little point value grades are just like in Jurassic Park 2, The Lost World, when the little dinosaurs were messing with the girl in the beginning because she had a sandwich. Sure, they ultimately bit her, but she survived. That one 100 pointer, that's Godzilla. And the only way a kid ends up okay is if he turns out he's going to be friendly because if it's not, it's over. Please take the time to look into this. Our kids deserve a grading system that offers more balance and more feedback into how they're actually growing as students rather than an arbitrary decision to assign a large point value to something to make it appear that it's super important. I don't expect any responding comments. I do understand how a public comment works. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Well, thank you for those suggestions, Mr. LeBrun. We appreciate your input and we have these recorded in our notes.
Dr. Kulikowski, the next caller is Amanda Hughes.
Thank you. Ms. Hughes, when you unmute, please state your full name and the town in which you reside.
Amanda Hughes, Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, couple of things. So, um, one thing is about sports. So my son yesterday had said, was telling me about gym. And they're allowed, three kids to a basketball hoop, each with a different basketball, so they can't touch each other's basketballs. Um, but then he's like, I really wish we could play baseball, but we can't because we can't touch the same things. So, sports have been open for a long time now outside of school and you know, if, if, if it's concerned in school, maybe we could use wipes in between so people can play baseball or kickball. They're not allowed to pick up the ball. Um, but if they're wearing masks and they're not touching their face and there's been sports allowed for a long time. It would be great if we can also include that in school since that is their one social time to actually have fun with friends again. Um, second thing is Amy had asked when full day will be open. I know you repeated what you had said in the beginning, Dr. Mast, but that question wasn't fully answered. So if you can, that would be fantastic. Um, and then my third point, which I did also speak to you about, was big events are open with food right now. Restaurants are open, movie theaters are open, a lot of places are open that allow food. And I think we could be inventive in figuring out how we can keep, how we can get kids to be able to be full day. Whether that means they're eating at their seats, which are social distance, and maybe keeping it to, you know, a few minutes at a time. Maybe smaller meals or maybe pods in, at separate tables where there's only a few kids and that's where they're staying every day with the same kids. So if one comes in positive, that's small group quarantines. But there has to be some kind of solution instead of just delaying the school being open. There's a lot of schools opening that are doing well, full day. And there's a lot of schools that have been open, full day. So I know you want to compare it to everyone in Union County, but when you look at those facts alone, I would love you to do that just to be able to, you know, see what they're doing and how we can open instead of just not opening. I know we talked about tents. We talked a lot about different options. And I think this is really, really important for our kids' mental health, physical health. And just getting back to a little bit of normalcy, the numbers, I know we keep referring to them. They are not like they were. And also, it's not just the positive numbers we should be looking at. So, um, that's it. But I would love it if you could answer Amy also and in the, when we're expected to be back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Hughes.
So, Dr. Kulikowski, just, just to highlight again what I said to Amy and what I said in the opening is, is that we do continue to monitor the data. And we do pay attention to what's happening in the region. That's what we're mandated to do by, by the Department of Health. What's happening in, in a different region, they have different, different conditions of, of a COVID rate. So Union County is, is significant. And also what's happening locally is significant. We know that there was a federal report recently listed 21 New Jersey counties in the red zone. That included New Jersey. Scotch Plains is currently at the highest rate that, that it has been, you know, during, since the start of the pandemic. So we were moving towards opening. We all want to open fully. We want to bring the kids back, but we can't do it until we're, those numbers, those numbers are down. And that they're consistently down. So we follow the trends and we continue, continue to follow the data.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Ms. Broadbent, do we have another person to make a public comment?
We do. Dr. Kulikowski, Bonnie Low.
Ms. Low, when you unmute, please state your full name and the town in which you reside.
Hi, Bonnie Low, and Scotch Plains, New Jersey. So I wanted to just thank Dr. McGary for the phone call I received prior to the start of this meeting. I had expressed concerns about our third graders being given the COGATs this year. He has explained that it is only a screener. However, I wanted to understand a little bit more about how this decision was reached to give a COGAT test, which will have material on it that students have never seen before, to students at a grade level that they have never experienced testing. And how this test could be deemed valid given the environment in which students will be taking it, some at home. given the environment in which students will be taking it, some at home and some in the classroom. And wanted to understand how you will be letting parents know that they may opt their children out of this, because I'm not sure that all parents are aware of that.
Does that complete your comment?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. McGary, did you have anything that you could have added that you didn't already say?
No, we had a good discussion earlier, Mrs. Lowe and I, and I shared with her that we would be providing some additional contacts to our third grade parents as soon as I have a chance to talk with Mrs. Mullman, who is our supervisor of that area.
Okay.
So, third grade parents, look for more information about this year's COGAT screener. It's not a, it's not the COGAT test. It's a little bit different format than third graders might have experienced in the past. And we really sort of took into consideration the year we've had in making that decision to move to a less cumbersome screener, rather than the full COGAT assessment.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Appreciate that clarification. Okay, Doug, how are we doing on time?
We still have time for at least one comment.
Robyn, do we have our next public comment?
At this time, no one has their hand raised. Dr. Kulakowski.
Okay, if there's no one lined up, then we'll move on. There is another opportunity for public comment. Brings us to committee reports. Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. I have two committee reports this evening. The first is our Student Activities and Athletics Committee. We met on April 12th. We went through a number of items. I'll just give a high level. We talked about the 20, class of 2021 activities. So, there was a presentation by Mr. Fatuko. As an update to the presentation, Dr. Heisey gave us back in December. So, the Food Truck Festival is scheduled for Sunday, May 2nd, from 11 to 5:00. The Junior Prom is scheduled for May 14th. The Senior Awards is scheduled for Wednesday, May 26th. Rep Theater, June 4th, 5th, and 6th, SpongeBob SquarePants. And then there'll be radio days as well. Senior Picnic is June 15th, Senior Sendoff and Car Parade, June 17th, Senior Prom, June 18th. Senior Pictures, Banners, two weeks prior to graduation. Lawn signs will be the last two weeks of school. Commencement is scheduled for Thursday, June 24th. All of these items and activities are all dependent upon COVID, what's going on with the pandemic, and restrictions that are, will, or will not be in place depending on the specific timeframe. So, those are the scheduled events. They're not necessarily, you know, firm until we get to a point where we're able to and get approval to do them, but they are on the calendar to go forward. Upcoming athletic activities, this is a little stale, because girls volleyball has already won what, their state championship. So, we're a little behind there. Gymnastics did well. There was scheduled activities that we had talked about after that meeting, wrestling as well. So, we're actually in the second part of the spring sporting contests now. So, we have girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, baseball, softball, track, golf, volleyball. So, all that, all those activities are in the, in progress now. There were some updates from elementary schools, so teachers are signing up for free virtual field trips. Field Day for the whole school is being planned and hopefully finalized. Evening Reckoning, the restrictions on outdoor gatherings will govern the event. Fourth grade singing instrumental music event, a possible clapout. And in middle schools, talking about Operation 4K, so student writing, students writing notes of encouragement on postcards, virtual talent shows, and the musical You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, Tarrell, and Schoolhouse Rock for Park. So, those are all of the items that we discussed, but once again, like I had mentioned earlier, restrictions will guide how these events are gonna happen, if they're gonna happen, and how they're gonna happen. So that's that report. I don't know if anybody has questions on that, before I move over to facilities.
No.
Okay, so I'll move over to facilities. So, there was five items, and I know Ms. Brody will be talking about some crossovers that we talked about in finance as well. So, the first being request for approval for a three-ton rooftop unit for Park Middle School for fresh air into the nurse's office. So, we're recommending approval of that. The second was request the replacement of five units at Brunner for, there's cracked heat exchangers. And it's, they don't function safely, so they need to be replaced. So, we're moving forward with that. There was a request, again, to purchase additional property behind the high school, but this portion of property, we do not recommend pursuing the sale of at this time. There was, there's a property on Princeton Avenue behind McGinn that had made the school aware that they have a shed that's actually located on school property, based on the survey that they received when they were trying to put a fence in. So, the committee had recommended, we're gonna do a survey of McGinn School just to understand the extent of the issue with the other properties within the area. And then we can ensure, you know, the properties and determine and guide the next steps in that process. So, we applaud the homeowner for reaching out to the schools, and we're gonna, you know, figure out what those next steps may need to be. The last item that we're recommending approval is the proposal from ESM today, tonight, for professional services for certified industrial hygienist of record, indoor air quality management services for the district for the remainder of the academic year. That we spent a lot of time talking about, the proposal, what's included in the proposal, the timing of the testing, the relative sample of representative classrooms. And we feel that this would be the prudent next step for us to, you know, conclude all of the work that we've been doing with the oral hygienist for our school air circulation. So, we're recommending approval of that as well. And that concludes my facilities report.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Is there any questions for Mr. Mariani? They're his reports. Thanks, Evan. Any other reports?
If I can go with finance, right after facilities, so then.
Oh, right ahead, Ms. Brody.
Everybody's mind. So, because we do have a lot of crossover between the two. We did also discuss the fresh air system for Park, the Park Middle School office, nurse's office, and we approved that. We recommend the approval of that, the replacement of the five units at Brunner HVAC units. We also discussed the acceptance of a refund for workers' compensation insurance costs during COVID. And this was given back to us due to substantially less claim activity, because people were not working and less driving and such, and that amount of that is $17,608.33. And that will be applied towards next year's premium. We also had a presentation from Anthony Miranda regarding the retiring and repurposing of district vehicles with a plan for a couple of years out. So, we discussed that. We also discussed the potential increase of greater than 10% from private special ed schools for tuition that could come down the road in a year or two. But that, just to keep, you know, let us know that that could be on the horizon. And we also discussed the quote from ESM and agree that we should, you know, have them in to reevaluate the classrooms. And that is, well, that is, that concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Brody? Thanks, Deb. Any other reports? Tanya?
Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. Good evening, everyone. The Wellness and Equity Committee met last Thursday, and we, the committee met and we talked about our Rutgers partnership with Amanda Malanga. We understand that this model, we're going to grow with the district. It's not a cookie cutter model. We're planning to hire a clinician that has a school-based background experience and will also carry a caseload. This would also depend on the acuity of what's going on. The, the input from the district is very valuable in the planning stages. We also have crisis screenings in-house and continuity of care. It's a nice complement to our ESS program at Tarrell Middle School. Rutgers, their role will be taking on the crisis screening liability and responsibility on health and welfare for our children, using the evidence-based Columbia Scale, and they also have the ability to directly admit to the hospital. So, that's our partnership with Rutgers, which we're very excited about. We also had an update with Dr. Yoshi and the meetings with the administration team. We've had three sessions of two and a half hours. They've been talking about setting norms and getting a shared understanding, which includes small breakout sessions and experiences of identity and social awareness. Our next meeting for Wellness and Equity would be May 13th. And also, just want to highlight that our Wellness and Equity Racial Task Force Meeting will be next Thursday, the 29th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none. Thanks again for your report, Mrs. Williams.
You're welcome.
And I thought I saw another hand for a report.
I have a Curriculum Committee report.
Mrs. Soriani, please, go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the Curriculum Committee met on April 13th. We discussed four items. The first was an exciting presentation regarding, from our Arts Integration Specialist, Mrs. Prestridge, and some teachers and students that she worked with in a very innovative project. She worked with the sixth-grade language arts classes. And it was a project about identity development and helped the students explore who we are becoming, was the theme. And the students started by just mapping their qualities and strengths on a two-dimensional outline and what qualities made up their identities. And then they went from there to pulling a concept and using photography and self-portrait to convey, to further develop that quality that they wanted to highlight. For example, some of the students, there were four students who actually came and presented their work to us, which was really great. And a couple of the students highlighted strengths such as dancing and reading, through a photograph of their dancing shoes on top of a book. One student photographed his eyes and just solely focused on his eyes in the photo. And so, through this project, they learned photography techniques, and they also then integrated it into language arts by developing a free verse poem to go along with their photograph. And the students were able, again, I said they shared their work with the committee, and then they were able to reflect for us on what the project helped them learn about themselves, but also about their peers. So, especially during this time when there has been remote learning, it really helped them connect with one another. So, in addition to the language arts instruction and the art instruction, it was also a project that helped, you know, in terms of social, emotional learning and health and physical education goals by encouraging self-awareness, personal growth and wellness. And Mrs. Prestridge actually sent us the complete, the complete works afterward. And maybe we can share that with the rest of the board, because it was, it was really just overwhelming, the work that they produced. It was absolutely amazing. So, maybe we can share that with everyone, and so you can see. The second agenda item, as always, we talk about our work, our curriculum work in terms of race equity and social justice. So, Dr. McGary talked about how Noel Baxter, our social studies supervisor, is working with the media specialists at the media schools to conduct audits of the district's diverse texts and sharing information with one another. It's a laborious project, and it's going to take time, likely continuing into the new school year. But the media specialists are working to identify, what do we have, what do we have and we're not, that we could use, and what are the gaps in our collection. Tanya already spoke about the sessions with Dr. Joshi, which we also talked about, the sessions that have taken place so far. Dr. McGary also talked about the state assessment update. We're not doing any assessments per state mandate this year. And he touched on the COGAT screening as well for third graders. The last item that we discussed was, and Dr. McGary also touched on this when he spoke at the beginning of the meeting, but we talked further about learning acceleration planning, that the district is now planning and strategizing around propelling and accelerating learning and growth as we look towards returning to more normal school day and year. The first step is where we're researching, selecting a measure of academic progress to use as a complement to existing district assessment practices that are already taking place. Supervisors are going to develop strategies for the start of the new school year and a mechanism to monitor growth over time in the next and future school years. This will help identify any gaps that may exist and will lead to accelerated learning from an individualized, standard-based perspective. We're looking right now at the measures of academic progress, which is called MAP, and it's being used in other surrounding districts. It's a standard-based adaptive computer test that can assess student growth needs per individual student. So, the trajectory of questions actually adjusts as the student answers them in the assessment in order to identify what students are ready to learn. And the benefit of the assessment is it only takes one class period to do, and the data is returned in one day. This would be given three times per year, potentially. Dr. McGary and Dr. Mast have to still meet with the administrators to decide on the tool that will be used for assessment and what the next steps are. Federal funds are available to pay for this. This particular tool would be about $59,000 a year to use with students in grades one to eight and includes professional development in addition to the use of the tool and the use, around the use of the data. In discussion is also the potential of summer programs as potentially moving forward. Dr. McGary touched on that earlier as well, and other potential supplemental offerings in the next school year. But first, we need to assess where students are at and have data to do that. And our next meeting is May 4th.
Thank you, Mrs. Soriani. Does anybody have any questions? I like the part that you said that we might get to see some of those creations from the students. I would love to see them, and I miss not being on the Curriculum Committee anymore, because I think that's the best informational committee that we have.
Yeah, I'll forward that to the rest, to the rest of the board.
Thank you. If nobody has any further questions for Mr. Soriani, Mrs. Boroff, you have a report?
Sorry, I jumped you on that one, Karen. Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. I'm going to refer out on the Community Relations Committee that met on April 7th. We talked about Memorial Day. We've since put out an announcement, but generally, we don't get ahead too far in advance of giving emergency give-back days. But we felt there was an increase in people curious, myself included. And I think that we, people wanted to get a little bit of a head start, a little extra weekend. And so, we thought it was in everyone's best interest to let everyone know farther in advance to give up those two emergency days to make it official that May 28th and June 1st will be added on for Memorial Day, so it'll be an extended weekend. I'm sure that it's been adjusted since we spoke at the time, and it is also posted on the website. But the Department of Health released new quarantine guidelines regarding travel, regarding quarantine in general. They are posted on the website, and I would encourage everyone, I think that, to my point when I started, that it changes so frequently, so we should always just make it a point to check the website. We did talk about the fourth quarter and the option, or the possibility of bringing students back, and where we felt with that. Dr. Mast has touched on that several times. And as she had said, just in general, with the increased numbers at the time right now, and as the way things are trending in the opposite direction from when we went back five days. But right now, we're putting it on pause to, for the five days, full days. If the numbers change, then we will reconsider it, and if it is advised. If the numbers change, then we will reconsider it. And if it is advised, we will reconsider it. The, we talked about the strategic plan, which is something that a lot of us have been waiting for and excited for an update on. We really discussed the options of doing it virtually and having it done virtually in the springtime versus doing it full person, hopefully in person in the fall. And having gone through it and most of us that have gone through it and the feedback that we received from people we asked, we think it would benefit everybody if we did the strategic plan in the fall and hopefully it will be in person. It's so for now, I know that a few people were waiting for an update on that. So is the official update, the strategic plan will not be done in the spring. It will be done in the fall and we're all anxious for that. And then we discussed the update with Lori Perlo, who is our consultant for communications. And we are looking forward to an update on the surveys and focus groups that Lori had done. She's returned to the office now and I know that she's eager to give us the updates as well. And so we look forward to diving into that data and hearing what everyone had to say. The next meeting is Wednesday, May 12th. And I think that's it.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Boroff.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Amy? Karen?
Is there a deadline for when we would make a decision for five full days in September with the uncertainty of COVID? Like we would know either way by August 15th or July 15th. Is there any date for that? Understanding how we're out of control of the COVID numbers.
So Dr. Mast, can you have any insight on that?
This is what I know, that the governor has said that schools will be open fully in September. You know, and we have said that too. We said it before, we said it before the governor. And we had the disclaimer unless there was an act of God that would prevent that. So we are just recognizing that we've learned a lot how to navigate and to open in a pandemic. We know that all of COVID won't be, you know, disappeared in the fall, but we will navigate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Mast. Thank you for your report, Mrs. Boroff. Are there any other questions? Are there any other reports? Seeing none, then we'll move on to letters from the board, letters to the board. There were five emails sent to the Board of Education from the public and the appropriate administrator has responded. This brings us then to our next public hearing that will be coming up on our next meeting on April 29th. We will have comments solely for the school budget from the board members and from the public. And at this time, tonight, at this meeting, we are open to our next public comment session. If you would like to make any comments, please go to SPFK.
Dr. Kulakowski, I don't think it is. This is for the, this is, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is for the budget. I don't want you to, we're not, I don't think, we only have a public session at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you for correcting me.
Sorry.
Very appreciate it. Okay. And we'll have the adoption of our budget at our next meeting. And then this brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Mast?
Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. I have two things that we will need to vote on this evening. One is there is an out-of-district placement and I move that Board of Education approved the 2022 case to change in placement for this school year. And secondly, if I can group them, we would also like to approve a field trip that is virtual, that is happening at Terrell Middle School where the Model UN Debate Club is going to have a debate.
So do I have a motion for Dr. Mast to?
So moved.
Murray? Thank you, Ms. Brody. Any question or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Mast.
And moving on to the personnel agenda, I would move that the Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommendations that we discussed this evening and exec.
So moved, Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Second, who was it?
Amy and I both seconded. Soriani.
Okay. Amy? Second, okay. All right, we had a motion and a second. Any question or discussion? Mrs. Saradaki, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Winkler?
Yes.
Mrs. Boroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Brody?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Soriani?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Dr. Kulakowski?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. Thank you, Dr. Mast. This brings us to the business functions. Mrs. Saradaki, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I would like to group these if there's no objection.
No objection, go right ahead.
Okay, 1B U S, I'm asking the board to approve the superintendent's recommendations for staff training reimbursements on the report dated April 22nd, 2021. 2B U S, I'm asking the board to approve the related services for A&amp;J Pediatric and David Katz. 3B U S, I'm asking the board to approve Durham School Services renewal at the state rate of 1.69%. And that's for the school year 2021-22. 4B U S, I'm asking for the board to approve the submission of the 2021-22 New Jersey SIG Safety Grant application and the amount of $17,114. And we'll use that money for repairing some sidewalks that need to be replaced in the district for safety reasons. If we skip then to 17B U S, I'm asking the board to approve the acceptance of the EEF grant awards in the amount of $12,756.35. 18B U S, I'm asking the board to approve theater vendors for this spring and that's at Terrell Middle School. Two vendors, the stipends are on your reports. 19B U S, I'm asking the board to approve the Dyn-Tec quote for the E-rate for 200, E-rate work. It's wireless upgrades at the high school in Park Middle School in the amount of $235,985.59. This money, spending this money qualifies for an E-rate reimbursement of about 40%. 20B U S, I'm asking the board to approve the Brunner rooftop units in the amount of $55,950. 21B U S, I'm asking the board to approve park rooftop unit to get fresh air into the nurse's office. Both of these amounts will be taken from our 1920 excess extraordinary aid. 22B U S, I'm asking the board to approve the services of Environmental Safety Management Corporation for monitoring the air quality as a follow-up to the two times they've visited previously so that we'll have a feel for the air quality with students in the classroom. 23B U S, I'm asking for the board to approve acceptance of the GOV deal funds. These are for some equipment that we advertised on govdeals.com and the net sale would be $1,107.10. At the same time, we went to bid for the sale of Dell Chromebooks, 724 Dell Chromebooks in very, very used condition. And we, the top bid was $32,580 for these, which was more than expected. And I'm asking the board to approve the disposal of these Chromebooks for that amount. And that is, I thought there was another resolution. Oh, it's in the ones, I'm sorry, it's in the ones that I'll review after we vote on these.
Okay. Okay, so for the items that Mrs. Saradaki has presented for this evening, can I have a motion?
So moved, Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Murray? Any questions or discussion about any of the items that Mrs. Saradaki has brought forth? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries.
I'll review the other items that we'd like your vote on next week. 5B U S, it's additional items to dispose of from the tech department. And this will be through public bid. It's 525 MacBook Airs. 6B U S is the ShoreTel Mitel Belenz Annual Maintenance Agreement for the period July 2nd through July 1st, 2021-22 school year in the amount of $20,528 for all eight schools. 7B U S is the district's intention to collaborate with the applicant Regional McKinny Vento Education of Homeless Children and Youth Project for 2021-22. 8B U S is the renewal of the NJSIA membership for the year 2021-22. That's with a zero increase. 9B U S is the continuation of subscription busing if circumstances allow next year to offer subscription busing with no change in the rate. 10B U S, after the, if the budget's approved at the public hearing, the, what will be the monthly tax payments by the municipality Scotch Plains and Fanwood. 11B U S is the vendor to perform our asset inventory. And the fee would be $2,800, a $100 increase over last year. This provides the auditors with the information they need as far as verifying that assets. They do a, they spot check for various assets that are supposed to be there. They make sure all new assets are tagged and then they do a calculation for the auditors on the depreciation. 12B U S is asking the board to accept the donated percussion instruments by Ms. Christie Gentlemen to the high school's percussion ensemble. 13B U S is the monthly business reports. 14B U S is a monthly disbursement listings. 15B U S is a monthly bill list. 16B U S, I'll be asking the board to approve EI Associate's proposal in the amount of $8,500 for the light meter reading. I'll add more details to this. On the high school field, this is for the field lights and this is, has to do with the litigation that we're currently in and.
Debbie, I think we should, any talk about the litigation aspect of that?
Okay, I'm sorry. But this is, will give us measurements so that we know exactly how our lights are affecting any of the neighboring properties. Is that okay to say? And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. We'll hear those next, next meeting. Okay, any board policies tonight, Mrs. Winkler? All right. Any new board business? Seeing none. Other board business? Any liaison reports? Mrs. Bauer? I would just like to remind people that the Garden State Coalition of Schools has their meeting on next Wednesday morning at nine o'clock. And rather than a guest speaker, it's an open forum. So I'm sure there'll be many items for discussion. Thank you for the reminder, Mrs. Bauer. Any other liaison reports or notifications?
I, Mrs. Soriani. Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. The Committee on Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation met on April 8th, two weeks ago. And I'll just try to summarize very briefly. First, we honored, I want to point out that during the summer listening tour where we gathered information, and I've referenced that many times before, we had a number of former Scotch Plains Fanwood High School students who were instrumental in planning the listening tour and speaking at the listening tour and giving us feedback. And so at this last meeting of TRHT, those students who are in various places right now in the country, who are in various stages of their education in college and working, they joined us for our meeting so we could honor their feedback to us and their, the input that they gave us and the help that they gave us with TRHT over the summer. So it was really nice to see all those students again and be able to honor them. So that was part of our meeting. And then we just basically, I've described also how we split into subcommittees based on the feedback and the information that came out of the listening tour. And the subcommittees again are about policing, about our schools, community and the arts and racial healing circles. So all four of those subcommittees gave updates. Basically for policing, we're just developing some guiding questions that we're going to pose to our police departments. Before we make any sort of recommendations, we have to understand how they're trained, the way things are done. And also we are working still to expand our committee. And I think Gina's watching tonight. Gina's on our committee. Thank you, Gina, our subcommittee, and a few other community members who were part of the listening tour. And then the schools have a couple of school subcommittee presented about a possible collaboration with the Queen City Academy Charter School, a joint program with them and also possible creation of an honors academy of sorts that focuses on education careers and social justice. So we're just at the very preliminary stages and there's more to come. In terms of the community and arts committee, we're at the very beginning stages of potentially planning a mural in our community. And that would probably happen, I think, probably at least a year from now. It's going to take a lot of planning. And then just talked about possibly diversifying the summer outdoor film series that happen in both towns every summer. And then we're continuing with racial healing circles and expanding our facilitator network. And that's my summary. So we continue to meet as a whole group and as subcommittees and I'll continue to update you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Soriani. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Soriani? Karen?
Stephanie, any idea where the mural would go?
That's in discussion right now. The first thing that was, that was thrown out was potentially like on Sheilin's Crossing where the, but then there was, there were a couple that may or may not work out. So again, we're just at the very beginning phase of planning and we need more kind of community feedback. Also in terms of what people, where people would want to see the mural and so.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you for your question, Mrs. Mitchell. Any others? Okay, well, thank you for your report, Mrs. Soriani. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none, then we'll move on. Any requests to attend workshops? At our next meeting, we'll have the Staff Appreciation Week for 2021. There's a resolution. For OBB, we will have the Retiree Resolution Adoption. Five OBB, the approval of the 2021-22 Schedule of Board Meeting Dates. And you can see them listed on the page. Just double-check the dates, including the reorg, the recognitions. At our next meeting, we will also have the approval of minutes from March 11th and March 25th. And now we bring ourselves to the public comment session. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for Zoom login information. In accordance with the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public School Bylaw 0164-0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments, maximum three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, or other board business will be heard first, and if time remains, you may address other matters. If you would like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. When it's your turn, please unmute, state your full name and the town in which you reside. Please note, board members cannot respond to specific concerns of individual students or staff members, and such matters should be addressed to the superintendent's office. So Ms. Broadbent, do we have a person ready for public comment?
Yes, Dr. Kulakowski. Melissa Wolf would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf, when you're ready, please unmute, state your name and the town in which you reside.
Hi, my name is Melissa Wolf and I'm from Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
I just wanted to highlight some things in case everyone listening might not be aware, but as of Governor Murphy's Monday, April 19th briefing, 185 school districts in New Jersey are now open for full-day in-person instruction. That means 75 school districts have opened for full-day in-person instruction since early March during a time when most, if not all, of the regions in New Jersey, as you've mentioned, have been in the high-risk matrix. And 20 of those 75 school districts opened for full-time instruction in the last two weeks. So respectfully, I'm asking Dr. Mast and the Board of Education to consider why we can't do the same. Let's please not say that the Department of Health is directing us. I know this because I've spoken to them and they don't tell you what to do. They only provide the data. The decision is always yours. This past Monday, Edison Public Schools moved to full-day instruction in Middlesex County, and Middlesex County has been in the high-risk zone since before the start of 2021. You know, if lunch is still the ongoing issue, why are we not following the CDC guidelines that were issued back in February? All around 100% around schools being open, how to safely do that and how to safely serve lunch. Lastly, I understand that today a letter was sent out to a number of families who, whose kids have left the district, whether it was homeschooling, private schooling, et cetera, for this school year. So if we really want those families to come back and we want all the rest of the families that currently send their kids to school to be confident that we're making the right choices and the right decisions, we need to show them a commitment to opening full day. And the only way to do that is now. So I will reiterate what Amy and Amanda asked earlier. When are we opening five full days for in-person instruction and why isn't that happening now? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wolf. Ms. Broadbent, do we have another public comment?
There are no new callers. Dr. Kulakowski, Eric Felon has his hand raised again.
Okay. Mr. Felon, when you unmute, please state your name and the town in which you reside.
Eric Felon, Scotch Plains. So one of the other points I wanted to bring up tonight, I didn't mention earlier, but a kind of around the theme of mental health and the services that our school system offers or does not offer and some other options. So as I'm aware, the school offers, I think, one mental health specialist per school. I think maybe I was told two in high school or something like that. And I think each specialist can accommodate only 10 students. So 10 students per school, maybe 20 or 30 in the high school. I'm not sure of the actual fact. But I do know that the closure of the school, the pandemic and all that has contributed to a lot of anxiety issues within my children, especially my younger one. And I have reached out to your school services to find out how do we get a hold of these mental health services to help bring our children back to a normal state and make them happier. But apparently that's out of the question because, you know, those spots, those 10 spots are full. So that leads me to, I also recently learned that Governor Murphy passed or is offering 1.2 billion in mental health services in grants to the state. I don't know if Scotch Plains has applied to any of these, to this grant at all. And if there's any additional interest in doing so, I would be grateful because I know more than 10 students per school probably require mental health services. And getting back to normal, but at least getting back to a full day of school, like Melissa and the others have said, I think is very important. And one anecdote that I just want to bring up that's kind of really sad but heartwarming and hopeful. My son, who has been playing saxophone, he's in the fifth grade. He's all but almost lost interest in playing the saxophone because playing virtually just kind of sucks to him, and that's basically how he puts it. And he hasn't really had a real intimate experience of playing with other people in person, except for one time, I think in fourth grade, when they had the first concert and it's really unharmonious, but they don't really understand yet what they're doing. So they've been practicing online and doing one-on-one with Mr. Trey, who is awesome. And recently, this past week, my son went into the school and he came home, he went in with his saxophone, came home, and it was an eye-opener to him. He said, wow, I never really I never really understood how good it feels to play the saxophone when you get to hear other people playing with you and you can hear them play. So to that note, we really need to bring these kids back to school. Music is important, the education is important, but so is the social aspect. And virtually is very tough on the kids, very tough on the parents. It's tough on the parents working from home, trying to assist the kids. And even half-day, it's like juggling back and forth. I see these kids, my kids and their friends are going in with these 100-pound backpacks, bringing everything. We really need to get back to five days. And I really want to ask you, Dr. Mast, I know you talk about going with what different data sets are out there and this and that. You're following different data and different trends. But the fact is, there's no data set in the Scotch Plains District that says our students are passing COVID around. And now's the time we need you to step up as a leader to come up with solutions rather than be a follower to other trends and noise that there is COVID spreading. Yes, there's COVID spreading. We all need to be smart and Mr. Felon, I'm sorry, your time's expired. If you could just finish your thought. So I ask really, if you can really, really think about innovative ways we could bring the kids back to full day, outdoors, whatever it be, there are solutions out there. The kids aren't spreading the COVID. There's no data on that. I mean, at least in this town. So I'd like to play to that. The vaccines are
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Felon. And thank you for sharing that lovely musical experience that your fifth grader had at school, playing music with the other students.
Yes, Mr. Felon, thank you for your feedback. And I would also like to ask you to call Dr. McGary tomorrow because some of the information you have, I don't think, I know is not accurate regarding the ratio of students to counselors or how to go about to get support for our kids and their mental health needs.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Mast. Ms. Broadbent, are there any other public commenters?
Not at this time, Dr. Kulakowski.
Okay. We'll just give that a moment. And we'll talk about our upcoming meeting is next week, Thursday, April 29th, for our regular public meeting. And do we have any other public comments at this time?
There are no callers, Dr. Kulakowski.
Okay, so then at this time, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting and move on to the Good of the Order. Does anybody have any remarks for the Good of the Order, Mrs. Mitchell?
I want to thank the parents of the senior committee. There was another delivery this week and it just brings a lot of joy. So thank you for that effort. It really matters.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Any other remarks for the Good of the Order? Mrs. Winkler?
I want to congratulate our gymnastics team for their amazing victory. They they did a great job. They worked hard and and it's just impressive.
Well, thank you for bringing that out, Mrs. Winkler. Mrs. Surianni?
I just want to, I believe that Monday starts Staff Appreciation Week. And I know the PTA has a whole bunch of wonderful things planned at all the schools to thank the staff and the teachers and the rest of the staff. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of the staff who have worked so tirelessly this year and I hope they all enjoy all the special things coming their way next week.
I think staff recognition, according to our resolution for next week, is May 3rd through the 7th. With Teacher Appreciation Day, I believe, is the 6th or the 5th.
Is that? Okay.
It's a coming.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Surianni. Are there any other remarks for the Good of the Order, Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. I just want to congratulate the Scotch Plains-Fanwood High School Girls Varsity Volleyball Team on winning the state sectional finals.
Wow. Yeah. State sectionals, oh my God. Thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. Any other remarks for the Good of the Order? These are all great things. Okay, we've already had the Earth Day greetings from Dr. Mast earlier today. So if there are no other remarks for the Good of the Order, then I'd like to have a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Boroff.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any question or discussion about that? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Night.